So we have two open seats for County Commissioner, District 1 and District 2. We have Gina Lecretzi.
Lecretzi.
Lecretzi. Shoot, I practiced that.
Lecretzi.
Lecretzi. If I just do my tail again. And Norm Nyberg and Beth Mason, they are running for District 1. And Tom McCracken and Dave Armstrong are running for District 2. And whoever wins each of those will join P.T. Woods to make a total of three county commissioners for our county. So with that, let's dive in. So for each of the candidates, I know this is not your first rodeo, and I know you at least have two more rodeos to go through before the election. So I'll do my best to ask questions that are fresh and reflective. So the first question is a leadership question. So leadership, in my book, and I coached for 30 years leaders, is a learned skill. There are types of leaders, and depending on the type of leader you are, there's one trait that seems to be common with all leaders. And that is their ability to reflect on what has happened and the actions that they've taken and learn from those actions. So that's the basis of my first three questions. And so we're going to start, and Gina will answer first, and then we'll go around. The second question, Dave will answer first, and then Beth and Norm and then Tom. Huh? Thank you. Let's do intros. Thank you. Okay, Gina, you're first.
Can I ask how much time do I have?
They get 90 seconds.
We got you, Gina.
All right, you guys hear me? All right, well, hi, everybody. My name's Gina Lecretzi, and I'm running for Commissioner to ensure a sustainable future for generations to come here in Chaffee County. Like all of you, Chaffee County is my home. It's a place I love and cherish. It's a place I'm committed to caring for. You know, I've been a steward of this community ever since I've arrived. I'm a trustee for the town of Buena Vista, former mayor pro tem. I'm a trustee liaison for the Airport Advisory Board. I am a member of the BV Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, the Region 15 Opioid Settlement Committee, the BLM Rocky Mountain Resource Advisory Council, and I'm also Vice President of Chaffee County Search and Rescue. And so through all these roles in daily life here in Chaffee County, I've learned a ton about this community, a ton about the county, our needs, our wants, and also our opportunities. You know, the next District 1 County Commissioner needs to be prepared and ready to hit the ground running on day one. We have to know about the priorities that are happening here, our issues. And I see things with growth. I see things in with affordable housing, so we need to take care of our workforce and our aging population, childcare services, foster prosperity and stability, and also make sure that we're preserving our natural resources. And so I have the experience, I have the knowledge, I have the motivation and the hard work ethic to fight for our community now and for the future. Thank you very much.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Dave Armstrong. I've been in the county for 16 years now. Moved out here from the Ohio area after a long corporate career in plastics, chemicals, and distribution. And I immediately jumped into the fire here as an entrepreneur and started my first of four companies here over the last 16 years, three of which are still functioning and thriving here in the community. I have a deep background in operations, finance, and marketing, and I've been leveraging that in my business activities as I've grown these businesses and worked here in the community. I also immediately got started with a district accountability committee at the school district and have been on that for 15 years, have led that committee for six, and have participated in helping our school district achieve an excellent rating that it has throughout the state now. As part of that, I got involved with also the issue campaigns for the new high school and bringing CMC into the school district that's here now. And I'm very proud of the work that CMC is doing to support our students and their growth into the future. I also am ready to hit the ground running. I've been attending board meetings since last November. I've had a lot of experience with finance and managing organizations and dealing with issues and opportunities, and I'm ready to get going. Thank you.
I'm Beth Mason. I have been coming here through Chaffee County since the mid-'90s. I moved my family here in 2007, so 17 years ago. I used to own a landscaping company. I've owned a restaurant. I quit that when I moved here to Chaffee County. But what I focused on was raising my children here, working in the school district with fundraising. I've done hospice work, caregiving work. I also think that my experience, because I've done so many other things too, and I've had to work with budgets, that I am prepared. I've been doing a lot of research since I attempted this job. The way I got on the ballot to begin with, I needed 272 valid signatures. I came up with 363, which means that I talk to a lot of people. And I also believe that my side of it conserving Chaffee County comes from me raising my kids here and remembering what it used to be like. Not that change is not necessary, change can be good, but I know that from the people that I talk to here, a lot of them have problems with change. So I think that if more people were just interacting with each other, they'd be able to accept change a little more. And I did promise, and I will still promise, to make sure that I talk to people. If they call me, email me, I will answer them. I follow through.
My name's Norm Nyberg. I grew up in this valley. I've lived here 62 years, started school of beauty, finished school of beauty, and I've served the community in a number of ways over the years. Three-quarters of my adult life, I've been in a leadership role. I, along with Gina, have, I've done a number of years on Buena Vista Town Council. I did two terms on the sanitation board, and I'm currently sitting on the Buena Vista School Board. My focus in Chaffee County is to bring truth, transparency, and trust back to the government and support and encourage and take care of the people that live in this county. This is a beautiful county. We've got a beautiful area, and there are a lot of beautiful people here. We just need to maintain what we're doing and move on so we became, become a better county in a great way. Thank you.
I started coming to the valley in 1972, and we floated from Granite to the Royal Gorge, three nights on the river. And wildlife came out and said, "What are y'all doing?" And we said, "Is this illegal?" And they said, "No." We said, "We're having a great time." I began this relationship, this passion, this embracing of this valley in '72. We bought an Avon raft, we started floating it, we still have that raft, and this valley has such healing properties to it that I wanted to represent, and I wanted to work on that. In between there, fast forward, I spent 25 years in education, 15 in the classroom, 16 in the classroom, and working with students. Working with students is the most energizing, the most stimulating, and yes, it's fulfilling, but it is also a challenge. I gotta admit, it's also a challenge because some students come to school to be loved, while other students come to school to be taught. Spent 10 years in a principal's, nine years in a principal's office, learning about leadership, learning about customer service, learning about advocating for both the school district and for the student. And then finally, I also sold 300 houses as a real estate broker, seeing the ups and downs of a supply side, of a supply and demand market, and then watching how somebody can move into a property and enjoy it. Thank you.
And if I go off course again, somebody let me know. All right, so back to leadership. So my first question, since Gina, you went first, then we'll have Dave go first this time. What aspect of your background has most prepared you for this role? And please give a specific example of that.
So probably the biggest aspect that's prepared me for this role is my growing up in a rural community and understanding what it means to be a participant in that community and learning how to work and to serve in that community and community service. And I took that with me to college and then on into my corporate career in running operational units and managing a lot of different people and a lot of different budgets and a lot of different projects. And those projects had to be delivered on time and on budget, and we had to have people who were motivated and willing to do that work for us and with us on that team. And be also be willing to listen to different ideas and different opportunities so that you'd get the best solutions and the best outcomes. And I brought that with me to Salida in 2008 and in starting up a business, you've got to start from zero, and you've got to hire people, and you've got to create a business plan, and you've got to get funding, and you've got to go out into the market and get customers and sell those customers and produce that work. And I was able to do that. And so I think I have the knowledge and skills to communicate with people, to get different ideas, to build solutions that work for people in both a large organization like a county and then also in small one-on-one events and opportunities with the community. Thank you.
I like to start with facts and go with facts as much as possible. I study a lot of things. I read a lot. I feel like I'm definitely back in school going through this journey. When I myself owned a landscaping company, what I found was if I told my employees why I did something the way I did it, it seemed to stick better with them so that they could also not have to be so micromanaged, that they could make decisions on their own. Again, that comes with education and just being a leader that way by showing people why you do things the way you do when you own your own business or when you work with somebody else on their business. You just, I think education is the most important thing and making sure that you're getting the facts before even making a decision. I have done quite a few things, not necessarily in government, but behind the scenes where it's the same thing. You have a goal, you follow through, you don't leave a job early, you don't quit a term early, you follow through with what you say you're going to do. That's why I got on the ballot, because I set a goal for myself to get the correct amount of signatures, and I was able to accomplish that.
I believe one of the biggest things that I can bring to this is my communication skills. I've always listened to people, absorbed what they told me, and seen if I could find a solution to their problem and be able to talk them through a possible solution through their eyes. I've always been a very good leader, the crews I had at Clybax, the crews I had at the school, all the people I've worked with, I've always gotten along with them. So I consider myself a people person, and I believe the best thing you can do is communicate and listen to people. Now, if somebody has an email or a phone call that comes into the county, don't ignore it, you know? Talk to them, find out what they want and how we can help them in any certain way. You know, the biggest thing I've learned in life through my marriage is communication. So I gotta stay with that. Thank you.
Looking back there at Judy. There's three things that I want to talk about. One of them is the classroom. Yes, thanks, sorry. How's that better?
Yes.
Thank you. One of them in the classroom, in the classroom, you can't just dictate and mandate and say something like, "I taught it, they just didn't learn it." In the classroom, you have to energize, you have to motivate, and you have to drive students to do their homework, drive students to engage, drive students to participate. And I think that my presentation in the classroom has prepared me to solve problems here. As a real estate broker, I've learned that nothing is automatic, that you have to do everything, that everything needs follow-up from the leader, follow-up from whoever's in charge for whoever needs to. You have to go and talk to the title company, and you have to talk to the finance company, and you have to talk to the survey company, and you have to talk to the building company. All those things happen only because you do that. And as a school principal, you have to advocate for every person. You can't just pick and choose and say that this is the best thing because every single person has an impact. Every single person has a takeaway from that as their stakeholder. Whether you're a parent in the school, whether you're a custodian in the school, whether you're a teacher in the school, whether you're a student in the school, whether you're a bus driver in the school, you always have a stakeholder involvement with that. You can't just say, "This is the single decision, and this is the single decision that's all you need to do." You have to go and solve the problem. Thank you.
So what I do right now, full-time, is I have an organization, this community-focused organization called Trail Sisters, and I started this as a passion project in 2016. It's now the largest women's trail running and hiking organization in the USA and most likely the globe. And I did that because of my ability to collaborate and listen to people and to find ways with relatability. You know, it started out as something where all I wanted to do was help this community. I was a professional trail runner for some time, and just seeing what was happening in the space is like, "I can do more, I can help these people, what can I contribute?" So I learned how to do a great job collaborating. So I worked with the different media outlets, I worked with brands, I worked with other runners, I worked with races. We came together to create a more equitable space. Our plan was to grow the pie, not take pieces of the pie away from others. So when it comes to community building, I understand how to collaborate, I understand how to work together. We all have to work together if we want to make forward progress. Also, I'm a trustee for the town of Buena Vista. I've been there for three years, and I was mayor pro tem for two of those. We get a chance to work with a lot of different local agencies, state and federal, and that's really important in the role of County Commissioner because you do quite a bit with people here on the ground, right? We're here to represent you, but we also have to take that voice and do it at the higher level. Additionally, with search and rescue, I mean, talk about teamwork. That's what it's all about in high-risk situations, smart thinking, making sure everybody's on the same page. So I understand how to work well in high-risk and stressful situations. I think all that matters.
Thank you. Question two, learning from our mistakes is the key to not repeating them. It's essential for not only our work but our lives. What is your biggest business/leadership mistake that you would not want to repeat again and why?
Well, I think to start with, you have to have a sense of humility, and you can't be afraid to make a mistake and admit it. There was one project that I did in Vail for a landscaping job that didn't turn out the way it was supposed to. It was a very humbling experience for me. I basically didn't charge the client for money, but I humbled myself, I apologized, I admitted my mistake. We all make mistakes every day. Again, what I think it comes down to is you have to recognize you can't be afraid. You also can't be afraid if somebody says they made a mistake. You have to allow that person to give you the example of what the mistake was, and you can't argue with that because facts are facts. And if you did make a mistake based on wrong facts, you need to know how to say, "I'm sorry, you corrected me, I'll accept your correction."
Well, I don't know if I've got a biggest mistake, but I've made a number of mistakes in my life. You know, I'm human. And life goes on even after you make a mistake. If you make a mistake in a decision you make as a trustee, or if you make a decision as a custodian, you know, those are things you have to live with. It's not the end of the world, but it's something you can always learn from. You know, years ago, I was in law enforcement, and the biggest mistake I made there was I got in a verbal confrontation with my wife at that time, and it ended up costing me my career. But I learned from that. I learned to listen to people, to control my emotions, to vent other ways, you know, sit back and just take a breath. So learning from your mistakes, big or small, is always a plus in life.
Thanks, Norm. Thanks, Norm. Two things. As a classroom teacher, you've got all the eyes watching you, and you're writing some problem on the board, you're going to make a mistake every day. It's going to happen. You're going to say one thing, you're going to transpose numbers, you're going to make a mistake, and sometimes students are going to call you on it, and sometimes students aren't. And you have to go forward, and you have to teach students in the same way that it's okay to make those mistakes, and it's okay to fail, and it's okay to try because they're learning. They're learning how to learn. And so they have to learn that even though they fail, they are not a failure. Now, the personal one, the hard one. To be a teacher, to be a principal, to be a superintendent, to be a school administrator, you've got to go through all these college degrees. And I'm not going to talk about that, but I'm going to talk about that I never finished the last one. I never finished my doctorate, and that sort of hurts. I've got a master's and a specialist and all these other ones, two bachelors, all these others along the way, which don't count. When I look at that last failure right there, I never finished it. We retired from St. Louis, we moved out here, and I could have worked remotely, but I chose not to. And I wondered to myself, not every day, but I wondered to myself frequently, should I have done something different? And I have to say, no. I'm exactly where I need to be. Thank you.
So let's see here. I'd say, so I'm like, "I don't think there's anything that gigantic out there," but, you know, being defensive to criticisms. I've always tried to be a perfectionist. That's just my nature, and I thrive on being competitive, so I go, 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 and that's who I am. And so if there's sometimes suggestions or comments, hey, I'm not, oh, didn't see that coming, it can be hard to take. So for me, I needed to learn how to embrace this as educational opportunities, take it as a learning opportunity to better yourself because sometimes those criticisms are, you know, a blessing in disguise because, hey, you can get so much better than maybe you thought you could. You know, another thing I'd say is not speaking up. I've had instances in my life where I was shy about something and I was nervous and I missed an opportunity because I didn't want to interrupt or I didn't want to get in the mix, and man, it would have been great if I just said what I thought. So, you know, I think it's always important, no matter what it is, that you speak your mind, you stand up and you say what you believe in. It means a lot, and maybe some people don't want to hear it, like maybe the previous me that was being defensive, but it can really turn into something great. So I think it's great to speak your mind and never be shy about that, and so those would be the things I'd suggest.
Thank you. You don't get to be this age without making a lot of mistakes, period. And I've made my share. But I've always learned from every one of my mistakes or tried to. So I've tried not to repeat them. As an example, I'll talk about landscaping and the business that I started here back in 2008, right after Lehman Brothers went south. A great time to start a business. So we struggled for several years, you know, in growing the business, and finally got the staff and the leadership in place to be successful. But without a doubt, every year, no matter how many projects we do, there's always one that goes sideways or upside down or whatever. And there's a person in this room who had that experience with my landscape company. What I do, though, is I go out and I talk to that customer, and I get to know what they're doing, what was missed, what we didn't do correctly, and we fix it and we make it right for them. So I'm always trying to fix my mistakes faster than I made them. But I'm going to continue to make mistakes, and I'm going to continue to learn, and I'm going to be a better person from it. And in the job as Commissioner, I'll have plenty of opportunities to learn.
All right. So question three, and the last leadership question. We had an event here a couple of months ago where the current commissioners gave us the State of the Union. During that, I asked a question. What did they see as the most needed leadership skills for being a County Commissioner and taking us forward? And here's their answers. Strategic thinking, action orientation, being a change agent, being willing to take risks, policy governance, ecological principles, and collaboration. What specific leadership skills or traits do you see that you bring that are needed to bring the Board of County Commissioners and our county forward?
Listening to the people of Chaffee County is the biggest thing that a person could do in a government situation, government, elected government official. Just listen to the people that put you in office. If they have concerns, listen to them. Don't blow them off, you know? Everybody in this county is an asset to the county. So no one person should ever be ignored for something that they ask, and I believe that one of the greatest things in the world is being able to communicate. If more communication was done, we'd have a whole lot less trouble in the world. And I believe that during my time as a leader, my different leadership skills, I have learned to communicate with people. It's taken a few years to learn to calm down, step back, and take a breath, but I've learned to really listen to people and communicate with people, and that's going to take this county a long ways.
Thanks, Norm. That is a great list, the great list of strategy and thinking outside the box and seeing things broader and bigger than other people. And then an action step and being able to take an action step and move forward without paralyzing yourself, without handcuffing yourself. Being a change agent. Being a change agent really means to be able to cast a vision and say, "This is where we should go. This is what could happen here." Risk, risk-taking is vital, and we had that question about where have you failed? That's going to happen, and we don't want somebody who's too paralyzed to take those risks. Policy governance is important. As a school teacher, as a school leader, you just can't make up rules and expect those things to happen. You have to enforce them, and then you have to make sure that the policies address what they're supposed to. Ecology and the environment here, that's vital as we think about what's necessary for our future. And collaboration, collaboration, I'm going to add two other Cs as well. Collaboration, collaboration. And then I want to look at cooperation versus competition. And I see cooperation, I think that working with all parties, working with all groups versus competing, we're not after making losers. We're not after making it so that somebody walks away as a loser. We're after having everybody be a winner.
So I agree with the current commissioners and their list. I think that's great. A few more I would add to that, though. One is being empathetic. Being empathetic to people, I mean, that shows relatability, and that's really important. A leader doesn't live on an island. A leader is with everybody else. You have to be able to be in the same space, understand what's going on, and that relatability opens up the door for more communication, more trust, right? If you're going to work for the people, you've got to be part of the people. You can't be in your own little space. Strength, obviously. It's not an easy job, and it's, you know, you want to make everybody happy, and sometimes you don't. And so it takes a lot. As a trustee, you know, we do our very best up there, but it's a tough job at times, and sometimes it's super obviously rewarding, and it's a lot of fun, but you have hard days and good days, so you have to... days and good days, so you have to be strong in what you do. And then communication, transparency is key, right? If you don't know what's going on, that, that's scary for everybody, cause then you lose trust, then you lose faith in the system and we don't want anybody to do that. So, you know, empathy, strength, communication, collaboration, trust, there's a great list of them, but, um, I'm gonna lean on the empathy, cause that one is one that's not usually brought up, but I think that having that relatability, um, really means lots to most people and they know that, hey, you're there with them, you're not in your own space doing your own thing, we're working together.
So I'll concur with the list that the commissioners shared earlier, uh, I think those are important areas. I'll add a little to some of those and maybe add a couple more. Strategy is really important for any organization, but it just doesn't get created at the top, at the commissioner level. It involves the whole organization and by the whole organization, I don't mean just the people that work in the county, but also the community. They participate in creating that strategy and you create a strategy with clear goals and think, and, and then provide the resources that you can achieve that strategy with. So everybody's engaged with that strategy and everybody's bought in on it and participating and behind it, hopefully. You have to take risks, as we talked about earlier with learning and, uh, the second leadership question around making mistakes, uh, that's gonna happen. And again, you just fix those faster than you made them, you learn from them and move on, cause generally, there's a piece or something that's missing and then you get it corrected and then move on. Process excellence is important also. Is the, is the organization functioning well? And are the processes and procedures in place? Do people know what their roles are and what they're supposed to do? Support the organization is probably number one. Recognize your people, teach them, help them get better and with this, and then continue to keep a strong emphasis on results. That's the end of the day.
I really think communication is key and when I say communication, it really comes down to being able to talk with like-minded people and other people that you don't necessarily agree with. That's the only way that you can come to a conclusion together. Not everybody's always going to be happy with that conclusion. I think a lot of times people do things based on emotion instead of actually standing back and looking at the facts. Sometimes I emotionally feel a certain way about a situation, but I can be swayed with the facts and if it means that something should be voted on or brought up, because again, these are the facts or this is what the people want, you have to learn to step away from emotions and that is the way that you can communicate, that's the way that you help the whole community, the whole county. And again, with that comes with, um, trust and just showing that you've listened to your, your neighbors, you listen to people who have questions and you respond to them. You can't just leave them hanging and expecting them to just go away or eventually if you ignore them, the issue's going to be swept underneath the rug. The most important thing is communicating and acknowledging when you don't know the answer, you go find out.
Thank you and thank you to all of you for being vulnerable and real in answering that question. All right, so now we're gonna move on to, I picked three topics, um, that I thought were the most, um, people have been the most riled up about, so that's where we're gonna go. So let's talk about Blue Triton Brands. So Nestle Waters North America received their original 1041 permit for the Ruby Mountain Spring production process, transmission pipeline and loading facility in Johnson Village. The renewal in 2021 of the Blue Triton Brands renamed from Nestle, 1041 permit fortunately requires section 4.1, that any sale or change of ownership requires the approval of the Board of, uh, Board of County Commissioners. Blue Triton has announced a merger, but it has not yet been approved. Once a formal notice is given, the county will request the organization to come for a hearing. If you are elected, will you vote to approve the continuation of the 1041 permit? Yes or no and why? Tom?
Thank you. The 1041 process, I think, uh, I think the league was instrumental in crafting that years ago, uh, over a decade ago and, and I think that that 1041 is going to guide quite a bit of, of the forward movement. The 1041 includes that, that clause that they must, uh, they must re-admit or re, uh, reapply for their, uh, for their next lease, uh, and that's a 10-year lease and so, um, yes, no? Well, if they meet the conditions that I, we're gonna follow that 1041. If they don't meet the conditions, we have a wonderful opportunity to re-conserve more of our water here. They're pulling out 200 acre feet a year, 200 million acre feet a year. So, uh, so I would say, I would say I would have to agree with it, whether I like it or not, I, I might be bound by the 1041 and, and those requirements that are already on there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I know you were gonna bring this one up. So, right now, the deal sets, I think, what is it, a million dollars in 10 years timeframe? So that's about $100,000 this community gets on average per year for a lot of water that they take from this, oh, sorry, from a lot of water they're taking from this community. As we all know, one of my platforms is protecting, preserving our natural resources and water's very high up on that. And right now, we're doing a groundwater study here in the county to find out what the recharge rate is in all the different aquifers around, uh, around Chaffee County. Um, this is actually a question in the Arc Valley Voice, I think that will be coming up, but, you know, it's a tricky one, there's a 1041 that is in place right now and there are a lot of, uh, requirements that go with that, the impact studies, but if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing on this year-to-year basis of, um, improvements and, um, well, I guess improvements for the land, then no, I'm, I'm not in favor of that. If I have the ability to be there, I'm going to push them on it, see where things are at with the impact study, but I'd rather keep that water here in Chaffee County and so, um, yeah, I'm not as favorable.
So water is very important to us, as we all know, and it's been said a couple of different times here already, uh, and I think again, the 1041 process guides, uh, the commissioners in their work around this. Uh, personally, and I spent quite a few years in the plastics industry, I don't think water should be in plastic bottles, period, end of discussion. Uh, so I think we should keep, we should, I think we should keep our, I think we should keep our water here, uh, as much as possible. Uh, I don't wanna sound, uh, well, maybe sometimes I'm accused of being too nice, but I think it's 200,000 acre feet per year, uh, of water that they're taking out, which equates to 0.03% of the water that comes into the county each year. So I'm not making a case for them keeping that water, I'm just making a case for facts. We do get about $200,000 a year, uh, from, uh, Blue Triton, uh, and with this change of ownership, I think we should definitely go in and renegotiate that deal if in fact we even want to give up that amount of water, even though on a percentage basis, it's very low.
I think the biggest snag coming up is the fact that this merger's trying to be pushed through by the end of the year, which means whoever becomes county commissioner is not gonna have a chance to say anything. Unfortunately, it was the commissioners that are in place right now that agreed to this deal. The water itself was a private ownership, tho, those people sold the water. Um, I have looked at the 1041, I looked at the new 1041 and right now, there are quite a few things that have not been satisfied and that, for instance, the drivers who drive these trucks are supposed to be local drivers. I have a friend whose husband was hired and he was never allowed more than one day a week to drive for them. The guarantee was 40 hours a week, so right there, they're not adhering to their 1041. Also, we actually get, there's $250,000 endowment for both schools, both school districts. We get 4% of whatever the endowment makes. I think Nestle took advantage of us, but we allowed it. So, if the merger doesn't go through until the beginning of the year, I am all in favor of rescinding that 1041 because we do need the water and it's almost like a carbon tax. People, oh, okay, sorry.
I'm all about water, so my answer would be no, not to re-up it.
Next, land use code. Together Chaffee County's comprehensive plan of 2021 led to the development of the land use code or the revision of it, which was presented for, um, review just a few weeks ago and is being provided for our county staff and the, uh, our county citizens to review. A planning review is being held later this month and then the Board of Commissioners will provide hearings in November. The plan has an estimated, using Tom McCracken's words, 8,000 words and it's expanded to 200, or to 22,000 words.
26,000.
26,000, okay. As I've read it, the intent is that citizens and property owners will have a strong sense of what they can and cannot do without having to go before the board every time and, and with every request. Have you spent any time with the draft, uh, land use code and what specific areas do you support and which ones do you take issue with?
All right. So the new draft just came out, I think it was on the 30th, I believe it was.
30th, yeah.
And I think the first public hearing is on October 21st.
Yes.
Does that sound about right? And so, um, so I have started reading through it. I've not read through the whole thing in the way that I'd like to, to make sure that I have a very clear and concise answer for you right now, so I'm not gonna speak to what I like and what I don't like, but what I expect to see, and if I have the opportunity to be in the role of county commissioner, um, I will, you know, depending on if they pass it before we get there or not, there's always room for adjustments, right? And I expect that to happen, cause usually nothing's perfect the first go-around, but efficiency, this thing has to be way more efficient than it currently is. Time is money, right? When people are trying to develop and move forward, the more processes that are placed, the more time it takes, the more expensive it gets for folks. Um, and to be honest, and that's in all parties, that's at the county government level and also for the developer. It needs to be clear and concise, that's another issue. I think right now, the current plan is pretty gray, it's hard to tell what people need and where things are at. Um, I also feel that there should be, uh, flexibility for community benefit, depending on what projects are being done, you know, I always think there should be a little room for that conversation. You know, if it brings a lot of community benefit, it's something we need, I think it's worth having that conversation. But, um, so that would be my answer and I will continue to read it, but I wanna make sure that when I speak about it, I'm fully understood before I present forward thought.
So the land use code has taken way too long to be produced, created, updated, uh, and frankly, if it needs 65,000 words or 68,000 or 287 pages, uh, that's already a problem. Uh, I've gotten to page 30 so far, uh, in all honesty, uh, and the only, the thing I've noticed in there that I'd like to see improved is that they describe a couple of different matrices in there early on about different densities or, or, um, development codes and, and then types of land use and I think that should be simplified so somebody can look at that and understand really easily, you know, where they fit or how they fit. Uh, I'm going to add on to Gina, uh, clarity is really critical here, it's gotta be made simple enough so that people and can read that thing and know where they stand and when they're, put their development plan in, uh, they know it's gonna get approved and it doesn't take six, 12, 18, 24, et cetera, months to get something done, cause business costs don't stop just because somebody's thinking about making a decision. The other side of that is that somebody puts a plan in and they think they've got their I's dotted and T's crossed and then they're getting 14 different brand-new questions that they can't find anywhere in the code, so that's gotta stop. Uh, and then I agree with the common sense solutions, right? Not everything has to be ticked and tied with a, with a lawyer in order for it to be effective.
I too have not been able to read 287 pages, um, I've been able to skim through some of them. I am very disappointed that it's trying, that the commissioners now, after so much time, are trying to push this through by the end of their term. I don't know what the purpose is for that. Like Gina said, if it does go through, hopefully there will be ways to amend it so that it isn't written in stone. I'm confused about certain things there when it comes to density and it comes to country and the country, town and the town. Actually, the comprehensive plan, I have yet to see in that comprehensive plan, anything that has to do with infrastructure. So I don't understand how the land use code can be, um, uh, take, you know, like parallel to the, um, comprehensive plan if there's not, the most important thing is infrastructure, which there's, and also, I think the most important thing here that ranchers don't realize and even homeowners, if there is not a statement in the land use code saying that if for some reason, the county wants to take your land or make you do something with the land because of the land use code, you need to be justly compensated for it. That's gonna be key.
Well, I've just started reading it and rereading what I've read already and trying to absorb as much as I can. It has taken a long time to do this and if it takes a lot longer to get this somewhat closer to being right, that's what is gonna, that's what should take place. But right now, a lot of common sense, like Dave said, needs to be written in here and not everybody needs to be a Philadelphia lawyer to try to understand this document, which is long overdue.
Now, I appreciate, uh, three things about it, one of them is that it's just about finished and it's just about done and it's just about ready to say, okay, we can get it back to work. I think there is gonna be a transition time for people to be able to learn what those new features are, but I think if we could open up that for business, I think that's gonna be appreciated, because builders are gonna wanna know what they need to do and how they need to reach into, uh, into the community to do their jobs. It's organized, I appreciate that, uh, it does have clear lines, it does have clear chapters, clear, uh, settings, uh, there is, uh, uh, some issues, um, we might need an, uh, some, um, translator, somebody to ease us into it, to say, hey, help with the explanation, help us understand what we need to do and so, uh, that, that clarity or lack of clarity might just be for, just because we've just seen it for a week. I think if we see it for more, we'll be able to understand more of it. Um, I agree, property rights are gonna be vital, property rights are, are, can them out to the Fifth Amendment. There's a little saying, the last sentence in the Fifth Amendment is, no property, no personal property shall be compensated, shall be, uh, taken without, uh, just compensation. So that's vital, uh, we need to see, uh, we need to make sure that that is included and, uh, and then ways to, uh, excuse me, ways for us to, uh, to share, share these things and, and get the, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Helen. All right, last question. Geothermal. Geothermal and Mount Princeton Geothermal LLC project has been a big f- lately. There are worries about the proximity of approximately 1,900 wells within a five-mile radius and the 366 homes that are within a two-mile radius of the proposed site, 8.7 acre site. Most of the concerns have been spoken to, including the Union of Concerned Scientists, saying that there have been no reported cases of water contamination, um, there's a proposal for closed-loop system to mitigate emitting gases and a noise buffer. And that is per the Sun article, um, of late last year. There are also concerns about conflicts- There are also concerns about conflicts of interest, specifically John Held being a partner, not only at MPG, but also on the Planning Commission. Several folks have said that's a non-issue. Funding and support of the Town of BV, Chaffee County, state and federal agents, energy for funding, and while it is uncertain that any production can be used by Sangra, Sangra Board of Directors passed a four-to-two vote, a resolution in support of the geothermal project, seeking funding to establish the viability of expanding geothermal energy in Chaffee County. Sangra de Cristo, Ark Valley Energy Future, Keith Baker, Mayor Fay, Tri-State Generation and Transmission Letters have all been sent in support of the project, including Bennett's and Hickenlooper, sorry about that. Sorry, guy. As clarif- oh, I'm not going to read that sentence. What is your specific stance on bringing geothermal to Chaffee County? And if a 1041 permit to rezone the site for production is requested, will you vote for this project? I think so.
I'll go. New energy sources are important to growth here and everywhere, frankly, in the world right now, and we have options for all different kinds, and now is not the time to talk about all that. Specifically to geothermal, I'm skeptical about the viability of that in the valley, up there, Mount Princeton area. But if there's a proposal, and if I'm elected commissioner, and as a chemical engineer, I will be all over that project and that 1041. Well, I won't use the euphemism for how I'll be all over it, but I'm going to be very skeptical about that, and I think that there are a plethora of other options that we need to be exploring also.
I believe geothermal is something to look at. However, the 1041 cannot come to fruition until there's a commodity that is recognized, meaning the wells need to be drilled. Then if they do find the commodity, the hot water, what temperature is that? That's when the 1041 takes place. I think that there are other places in Colorado that would be less impactful, less population. Basically, what it's going to come down to, I think, is for the residents to really see what this is going to look like. Thirty, forty-foot towers, there needs to be a crane up there so people can see how tall it's going to be, people can see the impact with the light on it, check for the noise, the decibels, and also, you know, that is a wildlife corridor. In 2009, CSU proposed that area as a very high biodiversified area. So I think the only way that the county and the people in the county are really going to realize the impact is by physically seeing it. And if that means sticking scaffolding up thirty, forty feet, or a crane with a light and a noise machine to replicate what is going on, that's the only way we're going to know until it happens.
I'm extremely skeptical of this project. It's going to affect many people in many different ways. I've lived in this county long enough. I like to see the migration of the elk up through there, and even if it does come before the board, I would not vote for it.
I am one of those houses. My house is probably a fairway driver away, so we're pretty close. There is a word I'd like to explain, it's the word "graben," "graben," G-R-A-B-E-N, "grabin," "graben." And we live on a graven, this whole valley is a graven or a graven, and it's a hinged graven, and it's all sand, it's all gravel. If you go out and dig in your backyard, you are going to find that sandy porous surface thousands of feet deep. And you can see it as you come down the mesa, the mesa we have here in Salida, that's actually evidence of that glacial tilt, the glacial silt combining and building, building that structure. Now, I say that to say that it's like a sponge. So I don't know what's going to happen with that water if they drill literally five, six-thousand feet deep to look for three-hundred-degree water. There's a formula, pressure equals temperature and volume, and we don't want them, I don't know if that water's going to impact my well. There's even closer wells that are also in the room. So I will, I will not vote no, on the sake of voting no, but I will say they'll have to make a very high bar to do that, and the test wells are now mandated by the State Energy Department instead of just the 1041. Thank you.
I think the key word here is skeptical. So, you know, look, I support clean, green energy, I think that's a good thing. I don't think there's anything wrong with that, I think there's space for that. You know, but with there being a 1041 impact study, if that comes to fruition, there are a lot of things to consider, like has been mentioned, wildlife corridors, the noise, obviously well impact, what's going to happen to the water. You know, but something I think about is, you know, as commissioner, I'm here to represent the people of this county. And I know there's a lot of great stuff, maybe this could do, energy-wise, for people outside the county and the globe, and I get that, but I want to make sure the people of this county are being taken care of. So I want to know what would be in it for us? How does it help us if it happens, or if it comes to that point? So how I feel, I'm actually, I'm not going to give you an answer, because I'm riding the fence on it. I don't know enough, I don't know what is possible, I don't know what the impact studies have said, because I haven't seen them, they're not here yet, and I want to hear from those organizations how it actually benefits the people of Chaffee County. So that's where I stand.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll open it to the media. So we have Dan R. here, and do we have anybody from Ark Valley Voice here? What about Mountain Mail? Yay! Are you going to ask a question?
I don't have any best part.
Okay, good. Dan? So for this question, Dan R. will ask, and you have sixty seconds to respond.
Just an opinion piece, I'd like your opinion on something.
Let me give you a mic. You can look.
All right. Very good. Your opinion on something, if you would. The working people of Chaffee County, the highest rents that I have ever faced, we have some of the highest gas prices, if not the highest gas prices in the state. The working people have to work one, two, three jobs to be able to afford to live in Chaffee County. So naturally, Chaffee County goes to a four-day work week. Your opinion? I mean, you have working people, and you're sort of, yeah, but we're going to go to a four-day.
It would be nice to, for everybody to be able to work a four-day week, and what I, I can see that being feasible, but if the days and the people were staggered. Sometimes you have people looking for building permits or information that they can't get on a Friday, and they have to wait till Monday. So I don't agree with that. Again, just for everybody to shut down, I think it should be more staggered, so that you have somebody in the planning department, for instance, maybe works Monday through Thursday, other people maybe work Tuesday through Friday, just so that there's always somebody in the county to answer a question. Things come up, emergencies come up, but the fact that everybody is just shut down, that's very frustrating. I don't, I don't agree with that. But I do agree, if, you know, sometimes we do need some time off, but I don't necessarily agree that it should be closed on Friday.
I would have to agree that I would be in favor of a staggered work week, but if people work four-tens, and they have that three-day, four-day weekend throughout the year, throughout the school year, to travel with the kids, or whatever, I think a four-day week does a lot for morale. But on the other hand, if you staggered it where the office is always open, that would be a plus, too. My wife works four-day work week, she loves it, because it's one day that I'm not there. So she enjoys the heck out of that. But four-day, a four-day work week, I think, once a person gets used to it, does increase morale in that organization.
I appreciate those insights. I know that from the school setting, we have two districts in the county, one district has a five-day week, and the other district has a four-day week. So we have two examples of folks making it work on either, in either model. I know personally, the superintendent, Ms. Yates, is reluctant to go to a four-day week, and it could be because she knows that she has a group of students that won't have a lunch or a breakfast on that extra day. So she's reluctant to go to a four-day week. If private entities, if the public, if the county offices can get their job done in a four-day week and still maintain, maintain good customer service, I can see there's merit to that, but I also think that the staggered, or having a rotating or a day off in the middle where somebody gets a Monday or a Friday off, and that alternates, I think that could be a viable option. It was supposed to be revisited within a year.
So I definitely get the allure of a four-day work week, and I agree, I think there's some benefit to that for folks, I understand that, you know, completely, but I agree with the idea of like, hey, if you're trying to build something and you need a building inspection, and you're ready to go, and then they're off on Friday, and then you can't get anything until maybe next Monday, it takes a long time. And remember, I mentioned earlier, you know, time is money, the slower things go, the more expensive they get. And so, you know, I definitely think, there's definitely some positions, I think, in the county that should be looked at to maybe move back to that five-day work week. Maybe there's ways, other ones can stay at four, I don't know, but then, also then you have a difference within the county, and that's tricky. And, you know, like what Tom said, too, with the schools, that's really tricky, right? If you go to a four-day work week, what happens to, people have to come up with childcare then, and it's, it's a lot trickier than it was if it would have been five days. So, yeah, I think that's something, okay.
When you said county workers, were you referring to employees of the county, or people who work in Chaffee County?
The people who work in Chaffee County have to work seven days a week, against the county workers have to work four.
Okay, thank you. So we all know how much it costs to live here, and we all know that the businesses that we have here at this point, save a few, can't compensate employees enough for them to be able to buy a house, or even maybe rent someplace. So there's an economic issue right here, and then on the four-day work week versus five-day work week, or seven-day work week, or three jobs, it's a, in any business, it's performance over time. So in a landscaping business, where it's project-based, it takes time to go to a job, get set up, and do the work. It makes sense to work at four-ten-hour days instead of five-eight-hour days. That's just economics, as an example. So if you can accomplish your goals in four days, great, but in a, in a service organization, a retail business, you need to be open for the public, for your customers, to be able to show up and get service, and that's what we're talking about, specifically, or what I'm talking about specifically with the county. There's a lot to do in this county right now, and we shouldn't be cutting back on time and work.
All right, you get one minute to answer this question. And where are we in the conversation? Okay. Tell us, tell us in one minute why you are the best candidate for this role, and why you should have our votes. Norm?
I take pride in what I do. I feel like I'm a good communicator.
Norm, I'm not sure the mic is on and close enough. Is it on? Okay, then maybe even closer.
I've been in, I've been in this valley for sixty-two years, I've seen what this valley has been through, what it can do, and what a good elected official can do for the people of this county. You know, the citizens of Chaffee County are very important to me. They always have been, even though when I was in high school, we played slide football, didn't play slide, I forgot. Now, I've grown up, so there is, there is no real rivalry now, it's one big happy family. And I hope to keep it that way, and help people to continue to prosper in their lives and enjoy this area.
I'm not going to talk about teaching, I'm not going to talk about the principle, but I'm going to talk about my experiences, the right experience to get this kind of job done. The wisdom, the failures, the lessons that we've learned along the way, I think it will quit me for that. Second is communication. I think it's, I love the roundtable setting, where we've all got a chance to talk and communicate and share some of those ideas, and I know that I'm not going to make everybody happy with every single answer, but I also know that I can communicate with the classroom, sorry, I can communicate with the classroom and pull, pull teams together, energize groups, get folks on the same page to do a common task, to do something that we all need to do. And that comes through transparency, that comes through being authentic, that comes through being myself, that comes from being a real, I don't say a real leader, but that comes from servant leadership, taking high roads, not doing the low-ho thing, and just working towards a common goal for everybody. Thank you.
All right. As I said earlier, I'm experienced, knowledgeable, motivated, and a hard worker. This is a full-time job, and if you serve somebody, that's going to take this job, work 24/7, you're doing. It's not a part-time job, this is the all-time job, right? We start at seven, maybe, we don't get done until seven. We go to events on weekends, being to your calls, we go to events, you know. I would say two, and, you know, take it for a week one, but I can bring a different perspective to this, but when I'm 41-years-old, I've read something different. I'm a mid-generation that's trying to do, the demographic trying to build their income and their demographic, trying to raise a family, demographic that's trying to make ends meet here in Chaffee County. I can represent everybody, but I do bring in a perspective that hasn't been shown before. And like I said, I'm here for creating a sustainable future for generations to come, and I think that's valuable. So men that are running all the time only deserve.
I wish I was 41. I'm the best candidate for this role, and deserve your vote, because of my deep work experience and community experience, demonstrated performance there as a leader and as a team member in all of those roles. I've built teams and built groups that challenge tough issues. We haven't always been successful, but we've made progress, and we've learned a lot, and we've developed long-term, lifelong relationships. Issue campaigns, starting businesses, creating revenue and jobs in the county. I'm very proud of that, and I can do more of that in this role. My values are family, faith, care, integrity, and trust, and truth.
I worked hard all my life. If there's something I don't know, I'm not afraid to ask. I'm not afraid to admit I made a mistake. And one thing I can tell you is that I follow through. I've never left the term early, awards that I've been on, I've never left a job early, and I follow through. So I am dedicated, I've come this far, I won't let anybody down. I promise to communicate and make sure that everybody's voice is heard. I answer emails now, I answer phone calls, I meet with people in their homes. Like I said, I follow through, I am willing to take this four-year commitment to the end. end.
Thank you. So, thank us all. Definitely the candidates for their time, for us, for all of the, all the, the, the press.
We have to say shout-out to Grace, Grace did a great job, living for Grace.